All right. The June 16, 2025 legislative session of the Anorondale County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Ms. Pickard will now lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Let us take a moment to pause and ground ourselves in the spirit of unity, service, and reflection. We gather here today as public servants entrusted with the well-being of our community. May our discussion be guided by wisdom, compassion, and a steadfast commitment to the common good. Let us remember that our differences need not divide us, but rather can strengthen the path to meaningful decisions. As we begin, we take a moment to acknowledge a somber and painful loss in our broader public service family. We pause to honor the lives of the Minnesota lawmakers who were tragically killed and wounded in a senseless act of violence. Their dedication, their service, and their sacrifice will not be forgotten. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of those who lost their lives and in support of their families, colleagues, and the communities left behind. Thank you. May we carry forward their commitment to public service with courage, dignity, and purpose. And now the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, we will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. We have one person signed up, Kyle Nimhard. Then, if there is anyone else here who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Mr. Nimhard.
Good evening, Matt—oh, Kyle Nimhard, 7809, Maple Run Court. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. I'm sure you all know why I'm here again today, to talk about the Nixon property and the proposal by Bluestone developers to develop 171 townhome units in an area surrounded by cul-de-sacs and single-family homes. I last spoke about the developers' exploitation of the Workforce Housing Act, and it's otherwise a very good bill that was unanimously voted on by the county council. But now that that exploitation has been made clear, I do want to point out a couple of things. One, Councilman Volkey, appreciate your engagement with the surrounding neighborhoods and taking a time out to visit the neighborhoods for yourself to see the magnitude of this problem. But I'd also like to extend that invitation to the broader county council just to help contextualize for you just what we're talking about here, and we stand ready to accommodate you. My fellow neighbor, Jigga Patel, talked about our neighborhoods being guinea pigs, but we don't have to be the sacrificial guinea pigs. There's time to act and make improvements. In case my previous testimonies may have come across as being opposed to the Workforce Housing Act, I just want to be clear, I am not opposed to the general idea of the Workforce Housing Act, and I support increased housing in Anorondale County. Just making the appropriate amendments to the Workforce Housing Act will not be an admission of wrongdoing or a mistake or inherent flaw, but it's an acknowledgement that the bill is dynamic and can still facilitate increased housing in Anorondale County in a smart, deliberate, and comprehensive way. This issue may be isolated to District 3 today, but it can and will become an issue for all other districts in the county. So I urge the county council to use its foresight and take the opportunity to make improvements to the Workforce Housing Act to guard against its exploitation by developers. Failure to do so risks calling the bill in its entirety into question. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. There's no one else this time. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? No? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of June 2, 2025, and the budget presentation minutes of June 9, 10, and 13.
The minutes of legislative session on January 2. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Radveen. It was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. The minutes of the budget amendment deliberations on June 9. The meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 10:03 AM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland. The meeting of the budget on June 10 was—the meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 9:35 AM. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. And the minutes of the final FY 2026 budget deliberations on June 13. The meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 10:05 AM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and that needs to be changed to Mr. Smith. I apologize, I will make that change. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of June 2, 2025, and the budget presentation minutes of June 9, 10, and 13, 2025?
Radveen, so moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of June 2, 2025, and the budget presentation minutes of June 9, 10, and 13, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 5925, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Credit, and Service, Deferred Retirement Option Program Known as DROP, Number of Participants, Term of Participation Period, Interest on Drop Account, Employee Contributions to Pension Fund. Bill Number 6025, An Ordnance Concerning Annapolis Road Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 6125, An Ordnance Concerning Epping Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 6225, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works Watershed Protection and Restoration Program. And Bill Number 6325, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Special Exception Uses, Community Peers, and Launching Ramps.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1625, Resolution Approving the Determination as Surplus and the Terms of the Private Disposition of Certain County-Owned Property in Glen Burnie, Maryland, known as 7409 Baltimore-Annapolis Boulevard.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4725 as amended.
Bill Number 4725, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Resilience Authority Director, Personnel, Classification and Paid Plans, Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure. That's all.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Anne Badowsky, our Personnel Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. Bill 4725 adopts the Personnel Officers' Classification and Compensation Plans for the upcoming fiscal year. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4725 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 4725? All right, seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 4725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4725 as amended.
Bill Number 4725, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Resilience Authority Director, Personnel, Classification and Paid Plans, Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4725 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4725 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4825.
Bill Number 4825, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Tiny Home Community Development.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the last week and maybe a couple of weeks, we were trying to set up a meeting, but I think because of the budget tempo and activities that were involved in that, we didn't get an opportunity to set that date. We're trying to set it this week, I think Friday. So at the appropriate time, I'm going to ask for another delay so that we can actually sit down and talk about some of the amendments for this bill.
You wish to hold the bill?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to hold?
Second.
Right. Okay, that's second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 4825 until July 7, 2025.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill Number 4825 till July 7 has passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5025.
Bill Number 5025, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, BRAC Mixed Use Development.
All right, Mr. Smith, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill is in reference to essentially correcting an action that took place over the course of a number of years. In my first term, we actually produced and created a BRAC mixed-use development that actually had specific properties that were encumbered with that legislation. In 2021, somewhere around that ballpark, the bill was amended to create a circle, and it excluded some of the properties that used to be in there. So this was an effort to actually combine those two effects of those two previous legislations. At the appropriate time, we're going to have an amendment that has been worked on by the administration. My goal has always been to keep Lynn happy, and so this language was, I think, derived specifically from her, and she'll correct me if I'm wrong when we get to that, but we'll modify that at the appropriate time.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? We will not hold a public hearing on this bill this evening as the public hearing was closed on June 2, and the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 5025 was deferred to tonight. So, um, hold on. Where am I on here? But we do have an amendment. Mr. Smith, you would like to discuss your amendment.
May I read it in, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, please read the amendment in.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment allows for a mix of uses required in a BRAC mixed-use development to be met in the development as a whole. And if you did not receive copies, there are now copies out in the vestibules. This amendment came in late for the public.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This amendment tries to provide clarity, and I think there was some language that did not meet the intent—planning and zoning specifically, and I think I'll allow Ms. Miller to sort of weigh in on this if she'd be willing to do so, but the intent was to provide that clarity for the first iteration of the bill and the second iteration of the bill for those two properties to ensure that the properties themselves still have access to some of the uses, and it's not excluded from the future version of this bill. I think that's how I understood that, but I would defer to Ms. Miller to sort of speak to that. Motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do appreciate the sponsor working with the administration and sitting down last week, I believe, as well as with the property owners to discuss this language. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Miller if she wants to make any additional comments.
No, that's essentially—it—we had some conversations with representatives of a developer who's developing in one of these areas, and this language is just to make sure that their understanding and our understanding of how the code would be interpreted is in sync, and we're all comfortable with how it would be implemented.
So does the administration supports this amendment?
Yes, we do.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Okay. So this bill will be heard on July 7, 2025? Yeah, no problem. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5125.
Bill Number 5125, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Higher Education Fund, Anorondale Community College Transfers of Funds.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Melissa Beardmore, the Vice President of Learning Resources Management for Anorondale Community College. Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office is coming up, and I also have Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. So this bill submitted at the request of the Budget Office on behalf of the Community College amends their current expense budget for FY 2025 by transferring $400,000 from the Higher Education Fund instruction to the Higher Education Fund plant operations. Turn it over to them if they want to add any additional comments, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Council? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5125. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5125? All right, seeing no movement, public hearing on Bill Number 5125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5125.
Bill Number 5125, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Higher Education Fund, Anorondale Community College Transfers of Funds.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5125.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5125 has passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5225.
Bill Number 5225, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfers of Funds.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Stephen Teroux, our Assistant Budget Officer, still with me at the table, along with Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney, and Matt Staninski, Chief Financial Officer for Anorondale County Public Schools. So Bill 5225 amends the current expense budget for the current fiscal year for Anorondale County Public Schools by transferring appropriations of funds as well as making some supplementary appropriations from unanticipated revenues in their current expense fund. There's quite a list that I can go through if you like, but you should all have it in front of you. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any comments, questions, discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5225? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5225.
Bill Number 5225, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfers of Funds.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5225.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5225 has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5325.
Bill Number 5325, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Stephen Teroux, our Assistant Budget Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. I also have several representatives from departments in the audience who are available to answer questions. We have Christopher Klein, our Superintendent for the Department of Detentions. I have Thomas Young, our Deputy Fire Chief, and Darlene Flynn, our Senior Budget and Management Analyst from the Fire Department. Colonel James Williams, the Chief Deputy for the Sheriff's Office. Pamela Brown, the Executive Director of the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. Alex Backy, our Assistant Chief for the Bureau of Highways and the Department of Public Works. Cedric Grant, the Chief Financial Officer for the Anorondale County Public Libraries. And Jessica Lays, our Director of Department of Recreation and Parks. This bill makes several supplementary appropriations from unanticipated revenues to these various departments, offices, and institutions, boards, and commissions, and other agencies in the general fund for the current fiscal year. We're happy to answer any questions. I can read through the list if you'd like, but it is three or four pages long, so.
All right. So we've got everybody here. So if anybody has any questions, now's the time. Mr. Volkey, go.
Let's start. So I'm going to start right off with the Sheriff's Office. A million dollars in overtime is what I'm seeing. Can somebody walk me through that? Like a $15 million budget.
Stephen Tru from the Budget Office. I'll defer to the Office of the Sheriff, who is here, but largely, I believe, about half of that is really unrealized turnover. So I think the sheriff, when he was here—I'll turn it over to him in a second—talked about his hiring, right? And so they've hired a lot more deputy sheriffs recently, so that's the unrealized turnover piece. The other side is the commitment to have a deputy in every courtroom, so that costs money to put deputies in every courtroom when they don't have full-time staff yet. So while they've hired people, they haven't been able to fill them yet, right, to deploy them out into the field. So that's going to cause overtime when you have to hire a sheriff who's in training and staff them in every courtroom. If I've missed anything, Sheriff's Office is here.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
He is correct. A lot of our overtime was used for positions that we had to fill for courtrooms. Other vacancies we had, starting in FY 25, we had a 25% vacancy rate. We had roughly 16 deputies assigned to the courthouse. We have 19 courtrooms at times, so it was anywhere from three to five deputies a day that I had to pull from our operations. But in order for operations to function, a lot of their stuff is scheduled, are time-sensitive, so overtime was the only way we could get around this. And as far as the unrealized turnover rate, $500,000 was taken out of our budget at the beginning of FY 25 because no one expected us to be able to fill a 25% vacancy rate. We had a very successful hiring spree, and now we are down to five vacancies. So in order to correct one problem, we created another problem.
Nobody else yet? Okay.
You keep going.
Thanks, appreciate it. All right, so let's go back to the overtime for a second. The mandate that there be a sheriff's deputy in every courtroom comes from state law?
It came from a request from our administrative judge.
Okay.
And it references back to 2023, when the Washington County judge was murdered.
Right.
Ever since that time, our judges have had a heightened sense of security, and they made this request that we put a deputy in every courtroom, and we felt obligated to honor that.
So there is no legal requirement that we do it? It's a request that we do that?
Correct.
Okay. And that request is costing us approximately $500,000 a year?
For FY 25, yes, it did.
Okay. Do we anticipate it's going to cost us at least that much going forward now that you have new deputies, and they're coming online, and those costs are all associated with additional deputy presence in the courtroom?
At this time, we have, I think, one vacancy left in security for the courthouse.
Okay.
That will alleviate a lot of the overtime needs that we had, and we do not anticipate that being—you know, overtime being to that extent in the upcoming budget—or in the upcoming new year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Sheriff's Office while he's here? Ms. Fiedler—to—Sir, thank you. Ms. Fiedler, you had your line.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering if the administration could go into a little bit of detail on the Department of Recreation and Parks for $590,000?
Stephen Tru from the Budget Office again. So we've got about $300,000 that's associated with electricity rates, so the budget was underfunded for electricity, about $150,000 for waste disposal services, which is tied to a contract, and about $70,000 is for direct charge-related vehicles, or vehicles that are maintained outside of the county's fleet. So that sums up kind of what they are, and the director is here to answer further questions.
I think that was a pretty thorough response, so thank you.
But I'll follow up on that. So you said a large part was electricity. Is that the same increase in rates that we're seeing in our private homes from BGE that we're seeing for parks and rec?
So it's twofold at Recreation and Parks. One, the rate has gone up, and two, we've brought so many new amenities online, so when we budget them, we anticipate what we're going to spend, but until they become operational, that's when it kind of catches up with us. So that's what caused the increases at our department.
Mr. Volkey, do you have a question for Rec and Parks?
No.
Okay. I think that's all for you, Ms. Lays. Thank you very much. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about board of elections. Are they here? Or is it you?
They are not here.
Okay.
It's going to be us.
Eight hundred thousand dollars for election official pay. Can you walk me through that? Is that state mandated? What's this coming from?
Sure. So you may recall that the Board of Elections was in last year's fourth quarter transfer as well for about $1.6 million. So I will say we've been playing catch-up a little bit with the Board of Elections in with the Board of Elections in their budget cycle, but yes, most of this, almost all of this, was in election official pay, which is based on how many election officials have, rate of turnouts, and how much staffing that the Board of Elections is putting out there on Election Day. I can't tell you if it's mandated by law or not, not an attorney there, and how many they have at each polling place.
There haven't been any elections in this fiscal year, have there? Was there, at the end of '24, I guess, is that what we're playing catch-up on? Is that the rollover piece?
Well, we just had the presidential election.
Yeah, I guess at the end of '24, in my mind, as soon as I said it, I was like, well, we did have an election. You're right. It feels a long time ago.
Yes.
You're right, you're right.
Yes, it does.
So, yes, we had a presidential election in fiscal year '25. That was this fiscal year, so, a rather large election. So, yeah, but you would say, from a budgeting perspective, we're trying to get on how many election officials we have, what election cycle that we've got going on, so, so, yeah.
So, this money is, we've effectively spent it, and now we're trying to make the board whole. Got you, okay. It feels like a long time ago.
It does seem like a long time ago. Okay, you may keep going.
Thank you. Questions for detention?
As Mr. Klein comes on up, Stephen Throop from the budget office, a lot of this is unrealized turnover. $1.2 million in Jennifer Road is related to unrealized turnover, and about $300,000 is in overtime. So, combination of about $1.5 million is overtime slash unrealized turnover. So, similar story to the heard in the sheriff's office. The detention center, as I'm sure Mr. Klein will speak to, has had a very better job hiring. Their vacancy rate actually went from about 12% this time last year to below 9% in the last month. So, we've made improvements there. As staff comes online, they've gotta get training, they're hitting us in salary, they're not saving salary, we're still staffing to the same level though, so it's costing us overtime. So, we're getting hit double whammy in the fiscal year that that happens. In addition, there's about $300,000 related to the new medical contract. That was a big topic of conversation when we went through the budget process in fiscal year '25. We didn't have the full explanation of what that actually was gonna cost us this year, so now we're truing up. We're seeing that same trend into fiscal year '26 as well, so we've kind of made that whole. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Klein if he's got anything else to say.
Any specific question?
I was just gonna be quiet and see what you said, but no, it's great. The medical contract, walk me through that, because I don't remember from FY '25 and the budget discussion we had then. What was the basis for that and the cost increase there?
So, the medical contract with the previous vendor ended. They chose not to move forward, and we sort of decided to separate ways as well.
Okay.
Just due to performance issues, we were racking up a bunch of performance penalties, which in turn equals poor medical care for our inmate population. So, with the new contract, what was unique about this financial package was it's sort of a shared risk model. So, we get from the contracted vendor $300,000 a year to spend on outside medical care, and then anything beyond that $300,000 would be the responsibility of the county. So, these are outside medical appointments, somebody's sent to the hospital ER, or an outside consult for specialty care such as dialysis, eye care, things of that nature. So, this was a new model for the county, sort of the shared risk responsibility. Going into it, we didn't know, we had some historical information on how many outside ER runs we'd have and outside consultations, but just not really knowing what those costs were. And then obviously, medical costs fluctuate from year to year as well. So, this year, I think we're very close to that cap, but we don't have the final bills, as medical bills sometimes take a while when they negotiate through providers and vendors. So, we're hoping that we will be under this $300,000 that we're asking for specifically to medical, is just to protect us if, for some reason, we do go over that shared cap responsibility. So, that's in relation to that, which also sort of speaks to the overtime piece. From our last medical provider to this medical provider here, we've actually seen 184% increase in those outside hospitalizations and outside consults. So, that's a little bit concerning, but when you have a medical vendor, the previous medical vendor that was underperforming, we don't know truly if those, if that's actually what the baseline should be. So, this year was very telling. I think next year will really tell us where we should be if this medical vendor continues to perform as they've performed thus far.
What's the length on that contract? That's, just everybody at home, that's the inmate population?
Yes.
That you're getting medical services for?
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the length on that contract?
I believe it's a five-year contract with multiple years offered for renewal.
Extension, yeah, yeah, okay.
I think five, for a total of eight. I might be, might be wrong on that.
Okay.
But I think that's what it is.
And the concept with the shared risk model is that somehow we're gonna make out better from a financial standpoint, I'm assuming, right? You wouldn't have done that before, thinking that was a fiscal savings, I'm assuming?
It was sort of a combination. So, we didn't have a lot of people bid on the contract. That was the financial package that the vendor offered.
Okay.
So, we negotiated what that was back and forth, and that's where we ended up. It's an interesting model. It's sort of been talked about in the industry. You know, one of the things that we have on our side for the county is we have a quality assurance nurse working directly for the department, and so our goal is to hold them accountable for providing as much service in-house as possible. But we're dealing with a population that has significant medical issues, that don't normally access the healthcare system as they should when they're not incarcerated. So, we do see very challenging cases. I know one case that we just discussed this past week is an individual dealing with hepatitis, and that treatment, which we don't have the capability of managing in-house, is $10,000 a month, right? So, those are the fluctuations that we can potentially see with the population that we have. HIV care is another example, that those are very costly patients. So, when we don't have any patients, the number looks good, and then all of a sudden, we might have four or five individuals, which we did this past year, which then rose those costs for us.
With the overtime and the unrealized turnover that you were talking about, so I know that you all have, I think, brought your vacancy rate down in terms of like your hiring and what you've all been doing.
Yes.
Do you anticipate FY '26 that we're gonna see similar overtime rates? We had this discussion, I think it was last year, with police and fire at the fourth-quarter transfer, because theirs was very big, and there was a lot of talk about truing that up, normalizing it, et cetera. What do you see as like the projection for you guys in detention?
I anticipate, well, I hope that our overtime would go down a balance, but I think some of our overtime is just the nature of our business.
Okay.
That we do see fluctuations with medical care or transportation. This past year, we replaced some security controls in the building, which actually took our security doors offline, which then forced us to have to key those doors manually, which increased overtime for a period of time during a capital improvement project. You know, the cyber event, you know, caused us to staff differently this past year. But, you know, as Stephen said, when we onboard people, those people are with somebody for their first 30 days, and then within that first year, we have to take them back out of the facility and bring them into a full academy for nine weeks. So, I'd like to say that it would go down, but in looking at the trends, I think our overtime is sort of where it's at, you know, based on these sort of normal fluctuations that we have. You know, hopefully it goes down. I'm always hoping it goes down, but I sort of think with the nature of our business, people out on FMLA, sick leave, you know, vacations and things of that nature, I think that this might sort of be where our baseline is.
So, I'm sorry, am I good? Oh, okay. So, I guess this is a question for budget. Like, across the board, it seems like unrealized turnover is a consistent trend here, and so the reason that I'm asking some of these questions is, we've just gone through budget. Obviously, the budget office works with the auditor's office to try to look at what we can cut in terms of savings. Did we cut too deeply in FY '25? Is that our problem? Did we not project correctly? How do we see this then playing out in FY '26? Like, what's the trend here in terms of that issue?
Sure. So, a short summary, about almost $4 million in this bill is related to turnover or overtime.
Okay.
Right? So, that is a big portion of this bill. It's one of the reasons we do have a CAO contingency fund, right, is to make those departments whole. We don't wanna stop departments from hiring.
Sure.
Ideally because of budgetary constraints, right? So, from a budget office calculation, essentially.
I'd rather you pull from fund balance than CAO, but I hear you.
So, so, yes, what we do look at essentially is a couple of years of trend. That's what we look at from a turnover perspective, and kind of where they are today, and it's kind of how we blend that together. So, we look at trends, longer-term trends in departments, maybe certain positions have higher, harder time hiring. The federal workforce layoffs, right, we're getting a lot more applicants for certain types of positions, maybe not other types of positions. So, all of that kind of comes into play. But again, it's one of the reasons we do have a CAO contingency fund, is to allow departments to hire. And honestly, from the budget office side, it's like, great, you have more people to do the job that you're supposed to be doing for public service. That's what we want you to do. It's a budget office, budget-type calculation of turnover, and based on, again, trending, based on recent hiring trends and long-term trends as well. So, perhaps we did cut too deep in a few departments, but not every department, obviously, so, that's a long way to say it's our best guess at the time when we make the budget.
We feel good about our guess for this year?
So far.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have. All right. Ms. Fiedler?
I have a question for a different department.
Okay. So, I think, any more questions for detention? All right. Thank you very much. Fire, fire. Come on in.
All right, so I'll do my introduction as the department comes on up. So, the fire department has largely two things going on here. One, there's about $700,000 related to EMS distributions to the volunteer companies. So, what you'll see is in the office of finance, there is about $300,000 that's going up because we have to pay our ambulance billing vendor more money. What that means is the county is actually over-collected or overestimated, overperformed on ambulance billing. A piece of that goes to the volunteer companies based on services that they provide as well. That expense comes out of our budget in the fire department. That's $700,000. $900,000 is related to direct charge vehicles in the fire department. So, that means largely fire apparatus. Well, if you've taken your car into a dealership or into a mechanic, it costs a lot of money to get repair parts. There's no difference when you're trying to fix a fire, a firepiece apparatus as well. So, the bulk of this is over-collection on ambulance fee revenue and the cost to maintain and operate those fire trucks. But I'll turn it over to the fire department in case they have anything else.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
So, with the direct charge vehicle repairs, did we have more than the usual number of repairs, or the same number, it just cost more?
Tom Young, deputy chief?
Yes. So, as you know, we've had difficulty getting new apparatus to actually be delivered, and it's a national fire service issue and problem. So, the longer we wait for apparatus, some of which was ordered back in '22 and still has not arrived, our older apparatus has to stay on frontline service, and those repairs start to mount up. We've had several engine failures, meaning the entire engine needed to be rebuilt or replaced. Those are obviously very expensive. Tires, the cost of those are escalating beyond what you would imagine. So, yes, the repairs are very numerous, and they're more costly than we would anticipate. The hope would be that our new apparatus would be delivered through this next fiscal year, and some of those costs would then be normalized and stay within where we project. But the reason for this need for the extra funding is just because we had more things break than were anticipated last year.
Appreciate that, and we don't want fire apparatus breaking and not being usable. I just think it's good information for the general public when looking at these big numbers to understand the why behind them.
Absolutely. And one further point is, interesting thing about fire apparatus, even our oldest piece needs to function just as well as the brand-new piece, because every time, it has to work and it has to work perfectly. So, the maintenance has to be correct, it has to be ongoing, it has to be done right every time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Ledbetter?
A different department.
Different department. Mr. Volkey, is another question for fire?
Not a question, just I wanna give a shout-out. This is a rare kudos moment, but the chief came in a couple of years ago and asked for an EMS billing person, right? That was the whole purpose of that position, was to try to maximize this. It looks like that's working, so, kudos to that. Good job for the fire department to try to get that money. All right, that's my rare kudo moment.
All right. I think that's all for fire. Thank you so much. Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for Public Works, or in regards to Public Works. I was just curious if any of these expenses are related to the, I don't know if above average is actually the scientific right measurement, but the amount of inclement weather that we had over the course of this past weather, it certainly felt like above average to me compared to some previous years, but if you could just speak to that, that would be great.
Certainly. Alex Backy, Department of Public Works, Councilman Ledbetter. Yes, I think a lot of us experienced some more intense winter weather this year than normal. That certainly does drive costs. The colder it is, the more ice that we experience, the more snow that lingers and lasts means more time on the clock for contractors, and that drives up our contractual services costs. Roughly speaking, we had approximately 13 storm events. There's a lot of variability. Some are very small. We just might put a little anti-icing treatment on the roadways. So, we ranged in costs for storms from about 60, 26,000 to roughly 1.2 per event. So, there's a broad range, and it's directly tied to what kind of weather we experienced.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions for Public Works? All right. Not seeing none. Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone? Anyone? All right. We will now open the public hearing on bill number 5325. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on bill number 5325? Okay. All right. Seeing no movement, the public hearing on bill number 5325 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 5325.
Bill number 5325, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth-quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 5325.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 5325 has passed.
Okay. And thank you to all the department folks who came out tonight. We appreciate you. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 5425.
Bill number 5425, an emergency ordinance concerning subdivision of development, non-public schools.
All right. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This legislation essentially takes the bill that we passed unanimously in May for charter schools, and substitutes the word charter schools for non-public schools, meaning private schools, and exempts them from Article 17. Anaronda County Public Schools and charter schools in the county are exempt from Article 17. Non-public schools are the only ones that are not exempt from Article 17. Anaronda County Public Schools is also exempt from Article 18. So, to understand what review does take place for schools that are exempt from Article 17, there are grading and building reviews, forest conservation, critical area, and other applicable federal or state zoning and building regulations are also reviewed. So, there is review in those processes and in Article 18 for the purposes of non-public schools. And I ask for the support of my colleagues this evening. The reason that this is emergency legislation is I do have a private school in my district that was watching the flow of bill 2625. I tried, or reached out to the sponsor of bill 2625 in consideration of an amendment to add non-public schools to that bill, but there was a time constraint on that piece of legislation. It's an emergency for District 5 because of this private school going through the process, hoping to only impact one school year for their lower school relocating to an upper school, but now they are in a time crunch because they are going through the review process and are facing the reality of having two school years where students will be displaced, which will create a bit of a traffic situation that's already being braced for by District 5 residents, and this bill would resolve that issue. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me, I have Kelly Kenny, our supervising county attorney, Lynn Miller, our assistant planning and zoning officer, and Mark Wiedemeyer, our director of inspections and permits. So, I do appreciate the sponsor reaching out to me today, and we had a discussion. Unfortunately, we do have some concerns with this bill of exempting private schools from Article 17 review, because it would eliminate a number of other reviews that are important. Primarily among those, it would eliminate any traffic or transportation reviews for private schools, which do actually generate more traffic than equivalent publicly, equivalently-sized public schools, because you don't have students taking buses or walking, and instead are all being taken by a private vehicle. Additionally, adequate parking design, onsite traffic circulation, and traffic safety would not be comprehensively reviewed if they're exempted from Article 17. And additionally, Article 17 is often the way that things like bulk regulations in Article 18 are reviewed, is through the site development process. So, I know I have Lynn Miller, who can answer any questions and is much more of an expert than I am.
So, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, to start with, this would only apply to non-public schools that are approved by the State Department of Education. So, this would not be like every public, or any private school that ever sprung up and just said, hey, we wanna be a private school. You have to be approved by the state.
Correct.
Am I correct in that? Okay. Do we know how many private schools there are in Anaronda County that this would impact?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
But I can get that.
That's fine. I don't need it right now. So, with respect to the concerns that you just raised, so, hearing your point about public schools and transportation, my understanding of charter schools is that parents are gonna be taking their children to charter schools too. Is that right?
No, they have buses.
They have buses too?
Yes.
Okay. Do they generate a different level of traffic than a public school?
I'm not sure.
No, charter schools, does a charter generate a different amount of traffic than a public school?
Mr. Volkey, I think we would have, we would have to review traffic studies related to such projects to be able to answer that.
Totally understood. I guess my challenge with this is, I don't recall these issues being raised when we did this same legislation for charter schools. I don't recall anyone having concerns about traffic and saying, this is somehow going to create this lot of additional unmitigated development, for lack of a better way of putting it, if we do this with charter schools. But now we have it with private schools, I'm not sure why the differences come in. So, that's where my question is sort of going.
Yeah, understood. Possibly, it wasn't raised as much of a concern related to charter schools, is because my understanding is those schools, like, like public schools, Board of Ed schools, it's typical for the Board of Ed or DPW to ask for a traffic study in relation to this, and they typically get that. So, there is some level of review done by the county. Like, for any county capital projects, there's gonna be some level of review that I think the concern is we would lose that for private schools under this bill.
And is that traffic study that you referenced something that's just done as a courtesy or sort of informally between the Board of Education and the Department of Public Works, or is that something that's required by code or state law somewhere else? or is that something that's required by code or state law somewhere else?
I believe that, in the case of a BOE school, that state law requires it, but I would need to check on that to confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When it comes to private schools, does the current Board of Education, now, do we have anyone from, are they? They have a person who is responsible for external education, or, I can't remember his name, and I see his face in my head. If one of you all said his name, it would trigger in my head. Does that individual, I know he reviews charter school applications that come in, does private schools also submit an application to the same Board of Education entities who then review their requests? Maybe that's a question for the Board of Ed.
I mean, I don't believe so. I think if they're, if they're recognized by the State Board of Education, there might be some correspondence with the State Board of Education, but to my knowledge, the County Board of Education doesn't have any role in overseeing private schools in the county.
The County Board of Education has nothing to do with non-public schools. They do review charter schools or contract schools because they are considered public schools.
Right.
So they go through that, they have to go through that same process that other county schools do on that side, but they do not look at anything with non-public schools.
Check. Is that something, and maybe this is to the sponsor, is that something as far as the traffic consideration, whatever, whatever same standards that the public schools and charter schools go through, is that, is that something the sponsor would consider adding to this, or, or no?
For a traffic study?
Well, just to make sure, I think, it sounded like the concern that the admin had was that there are some studies or some requirements that, that may not be achievable with the private schools, for those that are, for the private schools that are looking to bypass some of these articles, would they be open to still meeting the same standard of the public charter school pieces of it? Like whatever that requirement is.
So, I'm going to try my very best to answer that question, because they don't, they don't have to pass a traffic study, Anarundel County Public Schools, or the charter schools. I'm going, I understand that perhaps private schools create more traffic in theory than a public school does, because public schools do have bus transportation, but that's not a perfect answer, because I can tell you, I have communities jammed up from public school traffic in Severna Park, come to College Parkway for broadneck high schools, drop-off and pickup times. I have dozens of requests for police control, because people cannot get anywhere with the public schools' traffic. Private schools tend to have fewer students than public schools, so I'm not, that doesn't sway me, the traffic study, because we have traffic issues with public schools.
Check. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a tremendous amount of school construction going on, public school construction going on in my district, and I can certainly attest that the Board of Education, the county, and DPW are heavily involved in traffic mitigation, adding lanes, adding lights, adding roundabouts, we're doing all these things to adjust to traffic needs of new schools and renovated schools. I have no idea how that, I just, I just know that we do that work for our public schools and, and the communities that, that, in the, in the construction phase. We don't do it as timely as I'd like, but we do it. Still waiting for a light to be activated on Old Mill Boulevard.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess that's, we're sort of coming back to this same question, which is, is there a requirement in state law, or is this a courtesy that's being done by the Board of Education with Department of Public Works to assess the traffic impacts of new schools? Does anyone on the panel know the answer to the question of whether state law actually requires this, or if it is something that is done informally? And I'm asking that, because if it's done informally, seems to me the public, or the private schools could do the same thing, but if it's actually a state law requirement, then I think there's a good argument to say that maybe that needs to continue, and that's something that needs to be looked at, which is what I think, Mr. Smith, one of your questions was, kind of, are they willing to do the same thing that the public schools do? So that lack of an answer, I think is creating a little bit of confusion on the council part. If you don't know, it's okay.
I, I don't know the answer. Without doing any research to look at the state law to see whether there's any requirement, I can't tell you offhand.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, reminder that Bill 5425 does not exempt non-public schools from Article 18, like it does public schools. In Article 18, 183104, parking spaces, schools, arts, business, technical, or trade, one space for every 160 square feet of floor area. I'm just, yeah, parking was thrown out there as well, so I'm just alluding to that.
So, I understand that the urgency for this one particular school, my concern is this then opens the door for every school after here, so it's not just this one thing, it has long-term implications for other schools. I did discuss this with the sponsor, I had a, have a concern, because it, removing it from this section also removes the need for the community meetings, and I know, we've talked about that, if you bring that in, because I think people want to have the opportunity to weigh in on any things that are coming around, so that is a concern, yes?
Yes, and I, I hear that concern. I will say that I have committed to introducing legislation, if this legislation passes this evening, that says exempt for everything except for the, the community meeting. The particular school in my district that brought this idea forward has already done that, that has already taken place, so even if I come back with a bill that says a public meeting still has to take place under Article 17, they would have followed that requirement.
So, this is a question, I guess, for DPW or OPC, looking at this legislation, and we are looking at, you know, this would have implications for every, every non-public school moving forward, but it is specifically for a project that's going right now. Is there anything in this that will move along this project that couldn't be done without this legislation? Does that make sense? Is there anything that, that this legislation's going to do that we couldn't do to move this project along in a timely manner without this legislation?
I'll, I'll try to answer that, and I will say, both OPC and IMP have been making some significant efforts to try to expedite this project to the extent that it's within our ability to do. We did just issue, I will find the date for you, I think it was May the 6th, we issued the first comment letter on the first site development plan submittal, which we had gotten, I think, in March. I looked at the comments on that today, there's still outstanding comments, but they're not, they're not hugely, they're not the kind of comments that we would expect to take additional months to address. We would expect, and I don't want to speak for the engineers on this application, but we would expect that we would get the next submittal relatively soon. So, given how far it's come, that it's already been through, I think, two or three preliminary plan submittals, and now we're into the SDP submittal, I, I have to believe that it's close to the endpoint, particularly because IMP has already been doing some work on their building permits. So, do, do I, I can't specifically answer your question, but I'm not actually sure how much this bill would expedite the remaining steps in the process.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I'm just, this is my final comment before we go to a public hearing. The emergent nature of the bill for me is related to a District 5 project, but the idea of allowing non-public schools to be exempt from Article 17 is because we already have public and charter schools exempt.
Ms. Pickard?
Oh. And, and, Ms. Fiedler, I'm with you, I'm looking into that further and making sure, but I have concerns with doing an emergency bill on this, when the questions were raised today about what things are required by the state and what have our, and I would prefer, if we're going to look at that, to do it a little more in-depth and, and find out which things are required by the school system, whether by state law or whatever, to make that more clear. If, I'll say it publicly here, it sounds like OPC and IMP have been working with this project, and I would ask that you continue to work with them as closely as possible to get this moving as quickly as possible, and I would like to do that, rather than doing emergency legislation for, for one project that could have long-term implication for others. But I would hope, it, it does sound like everybody is trying their best to get this moving along as much as possible, as quickly as we can, so. Do we have any further discussion? Where was I on, where are we on here for next public hearing next? Ms. Rodvian?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay, all right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 5425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill number 5425? We have some folks coming up. Okay, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. And, so, who wants to go first? Go right ahead, sir.
Madam Chair, members of the county council, my name is Jonathan Kagan, I'm currently Chair of the Board of Severn School, and I speak in support of this bill to exempt non-public schools from the site development planning process, just like the county does for public schools and charter schools. Severn School in Severna Park is a private coeducational school that's over 100 years old, 2013, Severn merged with Chesapeake Academy in Arnold, and now enrolls over 900 students throughout Anarundel County from pre-K through 12th grade. In 2022, according to Maryland Department of Education, Anarundel County had approximately 13,000 students enrolled in private schools. Severn, like many other private schools, is a nonprofit entity, and in the business of educating students, and serves an important role in our community. Private schools are not commercial developers. Improvements and renovations to private school campuses have one sole and exclusive purpose, and that's to educate students in our community. Private schools, like public and charter schools, need the ability to modernize their facilities, to meet educational needs of their students, and maintain their success and sustainability. Private schools, like public and charter schools, need the ability to efficiently move through the development planning process to reduce the impact on disruption to students and their families. Students need to be relocated into temporary classrooms during the site development and construction process, so efficiency in the approval process is essential to the well-being of the students as to not lengthen this displacement. The site development, development planning process applicable to commercial and residential developers can sometimes take years for approval. The delays in this process have and can cause significant financial impact, which many of these schools cannot afford under current economic conditions and environment. Private schools, like all schools, need to conserve the valuable resources for the education of students. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kagan. Ms. Fox?
Good evening, I'm Kate Fox, I'm the Chair of the GAN Legislative Committee. As this bill is written, GAN cannot support it. First, because we feel that the county should not have blanket exemption for itself from any Article 17 or 18 requirements, let alone the schools. Second, we think the site development process is really important, and we understand, although that Severn School has had difficulty with the site development process, we don't know why, but, and we understand that it's messed up their very carefully crafted plan, and we understand that. So we had spoke with the sponsor, and we asked if there was some way we could limit this bill so that it would be specific to Severn School, or there could be a sunset, and we are hoping to see that amendment tonight. So currently, as, as the bill is written, we can't support it, and we apologize to the sponsor, but we appreciate the time that you spent with us, and thank you for your consideration, but we ask you not to support this bill tonight.
Mr. Hager?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of this bill. Private schools account for about 15% of the county's total school enrollment. That's a pretty significant composition, when you think about it. This bill is extremely simple, it's straightforward, it merely seeks to establish equity in terms of planning and approval processes. When it comes to education, we are all concerned about efficiency and cost-effectiveness. Whether they're public or private, we want our precious dollars to be spent doing meaningful things in the most effective manner. When possible, we want to see them expended in pursuit of things that affect educational outcomes. When it comes to value-added, compliance requirements such as these are less impactful than similar expenditures, and things like brick and mortar, computer labs, textbooks, creating teacher excellence, these are the kinds of things that we want to see our, our dollars get spent on. With the passage of this bill, we'll have an opportunity to do something very impactful for educational outcomes. Private school projects are still required to comply with floodplain management, stormwater management, erosion and sediment control, public works provisions, fire protection, utilities, state roads, grading plans, zoning standards, building permits, and they're already exempt by prior action from private schools for, for transportation. There are plenty of safeguards remaining, and also private schools are required to comply with the standards of the Maryland State Board of Education. As a former Director of OPC, I have great concern about eliminating something that would have a serious negative effect upon the communities or the areas where these things would be done. That is not the case in this instance, I am completely comfortable with this. In addition, it would free up staff resources for review of more important projects. We should not lose sight of the fact that institutions have one primary purpose, in this case, educating children. Let's remove one of the obstacles that is preventing them from doing so effectively. Let's ensure that private institutions have the same advantages as public and charter schools. Thank you, I urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. So, seeing no other movement, the public hearing on Bill number 5425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 5425.
Bill number 5425, an emergency ordinance concerning subdivision and development, non-public schools.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Volkey?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to recess for 10 minutes, so that we can take a look at some of the questions that were raised.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to take a brief recess.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to take a brief recess has passed.
All right, we will come back in 10 minutes. We are back, that was longer than 10 minutes, so, sorry everyone, but we are back. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for your patience this evening. I am going to motion to hold Bill 5425 until our July 3rd, no, 7th meeting.
Ledbetter, second.
All right. Madam Secretary, Secretary, would you call the roll?
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to hold Bill number 5425 until July 7th has passed.
Okay, is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Ms. Fiedler?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open the agenda, and I want to explain why I'm asking to open the agenda, because I would like to have Bill 6425 introduced. It's essentially the same bill as the emergency legislation with the added requirement of a community meeting, and it is non-emergency, just to keep the ball rolling in two directions, or, keep the ball rolling with two options, because this is an incredibly sensitive, time-sensitive project in my district, and the general belief that we need to look at private schools So motion to open the agenda to introduce Bill 6425.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to reopen the agenda to add Bill 6425 has passed, and now may I read in the bill?
Yes, now you may read in the bill.
I will distribute in just a moment. Bill Number 6425, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Community Meetings, Non-Public Schools.
Okay. And what's our next step? Oh, okay. I don't have to do anything else. I was like, is there another step I'm missing? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, July 7th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. for our next legislative council session.